Calling the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. This is the Board of Directors' regular school board meeting for Monday, September 25, 2023. Welcome to all of our visitors, guests, and media. We're going to start tonight off a second time around now with the roll call. Mr. Felth here, Mr. Burns, Ms. Danielson.
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Nathan?
Here.
Mr. O'Neal?
Here.
Mr. Schuler?
Here.
Ms. Payton?
Here.
Ms. Dimmler?
Here.
Mr. Veo?
Here.
Mr. Smansky is not here, so we are good on that. Let's hand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up on the agenda is public comments. We do have one public comment tonight. Feel free to come up. Mr. Gochet.
All righty. Good evening, Watertown Mayor School Board. My name is Andy Gochet. I have two daughters here in the district. One is in high school and the other is in middle school. I'm here this evening to discuss some issues I have with the district's reunification plan. First off, the most recent email regarding this plan went out on the morning of September 11th. Bad timing, in my opinion, but maybe it was just a simple oversight. I believe the intent of this email is to inform the parents that in the event of an emergency, the school district has a plan. However, I feel it's lacking very necessary details. What are my concerns, you might ask? Number one, what constitutes an emergency? There is not one example provided in the school's plan. An emergency so large that the most logical thing to do is transport all the students and staff to another location at a moment's notice. Number two, who declares the emergency? Is it the superintendent? Is it a principal? For parents to be accepting of a plan that would quite literally allow the district to transport the children to an unknown location for an unspecified emergency at any time is crazy. I'm certainly not suggesting anything sinister here. Let me be clear. What I am asking for is a follow-up with actual details of a plan. I spoke with a friend of mine who is a member of local law enforcement, and he mentioned to me that he had no knowledge of a reunification drill that had took place and didn't know what I was talking about. He said he had never heard anything. My wife also spoke with a teacher here in the district who knew nothing about a reunification plan. If this plan ever has to be put into play, it certainly seems like key players might not even know what to do. I did, as the email mentioned, and I went to the I Love You Guys Foundation page. It's there where I discovered the foundation was formed after a school shooting and the response to it. However, the site focused on educating others to its program and doesn't explain or offer details to how any school could effectively evacuate and relocate all the students and staff. It simply guides you through the standard reunification method. School buses and drivers have all summer to plan for the first week of school and their routes. Yet this year again, kids ended up home 45 minutes to an hour late. That is, however, through no fault of the school. That's not what I'm saying. It's, of course, simply logistics, new drivers, and the bus company. That being said, we are to assume that these are the same buses that are going to respond to this unspecified emergency according to the reunification plan. We are also told not to call or text our children during this emergency. We are told this not only from the school district but also from the I Love You Guys Foundation. The reasoning is to keep the cellular network usage at a minimum, even though law enforcement and first responders have cell tower priority access across all networks at all times. Period. A more detailed plan, which would include the following information, is what I am asking for from the board. What type of emergency would constitute relocation? Number two, what are some potential relocation sites that parents could expect to one day potentially pick up their child or children? And number three, is there going to be some sort of waiver that I can sign off on because kids can't go anywhere on a field trip without first having a waiver signed off? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gochet. Mr. Schuler will definitely be in contact with you, and he'll include me on that conversation as well. All right, moving on. Is there a motion to approve the agenda and addendums?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Danielson, right? Seconded by Mr. O'Neal. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item three, the consent agenda, which includes the school board minutes from the August 28, 2023 meeting, the personnel consent agenda, and the business consent agenda. It should be noted on the personnel consent agenda, it also has the food service and custodial contracts contained therein.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Ms. Nathan. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Moving on, item four, recognitions, presentations, and showcase. Tonight, we have Ms. Payton with the special education 22, 23 year in review.
Hello, good evening. My name is Randy Payton, the Director of Special Education. I just wanted to thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk about our amazing special education department. So the purpose of this presentation is just to provide you with an overview of the Watertown Mayor's special education program and develop an understanding of the services we provide students. Our goal is to provide each student with a quality individually education plan that allows them to leave Watertown Mayor District with opportunities to meet their full potential. So our why is students always come first. In 2022, 2023, our special education program served 354 students, with 20 being non-public. That represents 20% of our student population. This is comparable to Delano at 17%, Howard Lake, Winstead at 18, West Tonka, Waconia at 18, and Buffalo at 21%. Our special education team for this year represents 15 special education teachers, all with a very diverse licensure background. We have 3.4 speech and language pathologists, one occupational therapist, two developmental adaptive physical education teachers, a school psychologist, three nurses, 18.4 paraprofessionals, five Southwest Metro attinerent providers, an evaluation coordinator, and an administrative assistant. Staffing is almost 100% complete. We need additional staff hours in speech and a paraprofessional. Overall, we're doing excellent in staffing compared to our other school districts. Students must meet criteria in one to two of the possible 13 disability categories to receive special education services. The student's disability impacts and determines programming and hiring needs. In the next few slides, I'll document the students by age and disability from the last year. I apologize, some of the slides are a little data-heavy, but it's followed by a visual for easy understanding. So in our Birth to Three program, we have 11 students, and then our early childhood special education, we have 41 students. As you can see, our developmental delay, well, next slide, please. Thank you. Most of our students qualify under developmental delay, which means they have significant challenges in meeting those developmental milestones, followed by speech and language, autism, and deaf and hardened hearing. At our elementary years, six to 11 years, we had 169 students qualify for services, with most kids qualifying in speech and language. So speech and language can be a primary and a secondary disability, and so when speech, we think of more of the articulation, and language is more the receptive expression. So for example, in autism spectrum disorder, a student may have a primary disability of autism spectrum disorder, and then a second disability of speech and language impairment. Again, the speech and language makes up the majority, and then we go into specific learning disabilities, autism spectrum disorder, emotional behavioral disorder, other health disability, developmental delay, developmental cognitive disabilities, both mild and moderate, and severe and profound. And then we have traumatic brain injury, physical impairment, deaf and hardened hearing. So we have to cover a broad variety of services for these students, and not one is more important than the other. Our secondary schools, 12 to 17 years, is 145 students. During the pandemic, we saw an uptick in emotional behavioral disorders. A lot of times, we think of more of the external behaviors, but a lot of times, it is also the internalizing, where it's the anxiety and the depression piece that comes out. The specific learning disabilities, as we can see from the next slide, is as the students go up in grades, the academics becomes more challenging, and so there's more of a gap between their abilities and what is expected of them, and so we see more students needing help with their math, reading, and writing. Other health disabilities is next, that whole focus piece, ADHD, autism spectrum disorders, EBD, speech and language, and then on to the developmental cognitive disabilities. Our transition program had eight students last year, and it's interesting, this year in our legislation, they extended the services that students conceive and transition to age 22, so that's new for this year. Our transition program is called Water Mayor Possibilities Adult Transition Program. So last year, with the eight students, we had autism spectrum disorder, other health disability, and the developmental cognitive, both mild, moderate, and severe and profound. The workload for special education teachers is immense. Every special education teacher is responsible for teaching classes, so they need to teach academic, social, emotional, and behavioral. They're required to complete due process on time. They have to write MDE, mandated individual education plans that follow state statute, evaluation progress reports, positive behavior support plans. They manage caseloads that have direct and indirect services that they need to manage, organize and plan evaluation IEP meetings, and collaborate with general education staff, students, and families. Our average caseload for this year is early childhood. We have 10, but take into account they're responsible for an enormous amount of evaluations. Elementary is at 12, middle school is at 16, and high schools at 20, and transitions this year is at six students. Typically, in Minnesota, the average caseload for elementary is 15 to 18 students, and at the secondary level, it's 15 to 25. Our intinerant providers have a much higher caseload. They see a lot of students less often, and sometimes they can be more consultative in nature. Watertown Mayor has our own occupational therapist, but we do contract out to Southwest Metro for five of our positions. We have an audiologist we can contract out to, physical therapists, and teachers of the following: deaf and hardened hearing, blind visual impairment, and physical impairment. Speech and language pathologists often have caseloads of 55 students, and typically case manage about 50% of their caseload. Elementary school, they have 92 students, and middle school, high school has approximately 60 students. And arranging their schedules is always challenging, trying to work around the general education schedules. School psychologists typically make about 110 evaluations per year, and they're an integral part of the building's intervention efforts. Last year, 143 evaluations were completed, and now these 48% were initial comprehensive evaluation. Each student must undergo an IEP reevaluation at least every three years, sometimes more often if there are emerging needs. The Help Me Grow referrals and parent requests also generate evaluations due to developmental concerns with their child. This next slide is a snapshot of evaluations that we had last year. At early childhood, we had the most, 40 evaluations, but if you look at the total evaluations between kindergarten to high school, they're very close, and it's mainly because the elementary and early childhood have more initials, where the secondary and middle school have more of the reevaluations. In addition to a student's disability, legislation also impacts programming. State legislature this year passed the READ Act, which replaces the Minnesota Read Well Act, and basically what this says is that every Minnesota child needs to be reading at grade level every year, kindergarten and on. So I'm proud to announce that last year, all of our staff were trained in SANDA curriculum, a well-evidence reading program, so that we are up for this challenge. In literacy, we have progress monitoring that happens three times per year, and this tracks the students, where they're at in math and in reading. This research-based universal screening tool provides data to pinpoint where intervention in tier one supports are needed. All of our staff last year were also trained in letters, and letters is the science behind reading, and it really supports the SANDA system. It translates right into it. The SANDA system is a comprehensive line of materials designed to help educators provide multisensory reading instruction to students from pre-K through eighth-grade reading levels using proven Orton-Gillingham methods. Strategies to help both staff and students include crisis prevention intervention. It's a program that is designed to help organize, identify, prevent, and de-escalate crisis. This summer, each staff member had eight hours of training on CPI. CPI helps when students are escalated, that staff can put the proper holds on them. We have mentors for all new staff. We have due process nights that will be held monthly for two hours after school. Staff will have the opportunity to ask questions and have the opportunity to attain supports on evaluation, IEP's progress reports. The district currently provides two days or 16 hours of due process paid to each special education teachers. Also, we team taught our language arts to provide additional supports in reading and writing. Not only, we are also focused on all learners. So we had our DCD and autism teachers trained, and pairs trained for 10 hours in the Starlinks curriculum. The Starlinks curriculum provides evidence-based instruction that aligns with educational standards and most effective strategies in working with students with developmental cognitive disabilities and autism spectrum disorders. And what I like about this curriculum is that it allows discreet trials, routine, and themes to teach adaptive functioning skills and vocabulary. So it's a great program for these kiddos. Setting three programs. Currently, we have a program. First of all, what is a setting three program? A setting three program is where students spend at least 60% of their day in a special education classroom. These programs were designed because a lot of the Level Four setting programs at Southwest Metro are currently on wait lists, and they don't have any room. So we had to design programs to help our students' needs who are struggling with behaviors and helping them get their education. The Bridge is the program at the elementary school. Last year, it started, and this year, it's going strong, and we're seeing some great results. Amy Frank is doing an amazing job running that program. Middle school is called Learning Choices and Change, and that is in the beginning process of getting that program started. Student-to-teacher ratio is three to six students per teacher with one para. The Special Education Improvement Plan has four goals that we want to strive towards. All students report satisfaction with their children's experience. All special education employees report satisfaction, and we want each high school student to have, to meet their potential, and have a plan after school. In addition, the last goal is to, we want kids to feel connected to school and have a sense of well-being. The Watertown Mayor Seek Advisory Council will be a group that provides input on special education issues to our district. This inspiring group will advise, advocate on special education needs, and that will be coming out soon. The dates aren't up. Creating environments where all special education students feel connected, experience opportunities to grow and thrive is our mission. I just wanted to thank you for your time in letting me speak about our department, and just wanted to see if anyone had any questions or concerns or anything I can help them with.
No. Awesome. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Oh, I guess Mr. Schuler does.
One point maybe just to make Randy so the board understands, too. During COVID, I know the child find numbers were really low because parents weren't referring their children through COVID, because, you know, the avenues were either we were in distance learning, or they weren't getting in contact with the school to get evaluated. Has that changed our numbers, starting to get back to where we think they are? I mean, obviously, the percentage of students qualifying looks like that's getting back to normal terms, but do we feel like we're kind of back there again?
Yeah, I do. We had 40 initials with early childhood, and when I connected with them, they're having a lot of students being referred through the Help Me Grow program, and they're also networking with, you know, the childcare providers and the healthcare providers, and like, you know, what are some things to look for that kids who need support? And so they're really having that network. And also, like, let's say if a student doesn't qualify, they're still checking on them, so in case some other needs would be needed, but it doesn't go away, even if they don't qualify, that we're continuing trying to work with these families. And also, what they've found is that siblings, they're finding that sometimes their siblings, they haven't been notified, but they need supports, and so then they're working with the siblings, and so it's a connection into the school district that you wouldn't think of, but those are another avenue.
That's the other point. We weren't going into homes and identifying children that were, you know, struggling at that point, and so that was really, it's great to hear that we're able to get back to where we're at and kids getting the service. We know early intervention is the key.
It really is.
In that aspect, so.
We have a really strong program at the early childhood.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First item up on the action items, resolution granting property tax abatement. Mr. Schuler, Ms. Rader.
Well, as you heard from Mr. Fetters earlier this evening, in terms of our next step in the process, would be to move forward, as we are recommending that the board moves forward with granting the property tax abatement. Click on that here. As you can see, that document, again, calling out for the parking lot projects that we have discussed, and the dollar amount that we have also indicated for that. This one also does give the property ID numbers of all the properties that have been identified through the process. As she mentioned, I think there's 800 properties that have been essentially abated, and those funds will come back for this abatement bond moving forward.
Move approval. I will second. Have a motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Mr. Felth. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item B, parameters resolution related to the issuance of the school district's general obligation tax abatement bonds. Mr. Schuler, Ms. Rader.
Again, this is the next step in the process. The parameters resolution sets the sale date, the maximum percentage, the total dollar amount, again, and I'm missing one other item. It's a 15-year bond that's indicated in this document. Ms. Raiders, anything else that I'm missing connects there?
I think you got it all.
Gives the ceilings.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the parameters resolution.
Second.
Have a motion made by Mr. Felth, seconded by Ms. Nathan. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item C, acknowledgement of donations, contributions, and fundraising.
Mr. Chair, we have an anonymous donor that is donating to our high school music department, I believe to use in the choir room, but I'm not 100% accurate on that. I didn't get a follow-up, but I think that's where it's headed. But it's a baby grand piano, very, very generous donation. As you know, those are not cheap, but again, the purpose is to help the choir and vocal ensemble. And there it is, some ensemble groups work as well with that instrument. So again, very nice donation, and we thank that anonymous donor for that donation.
I make a motion to approve the donation.
Motion made by Ms. Danielson, seconded by Mr. O'Neal. Any further discussion on the donation? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries, and thank you to that anonymous donor as well. Item D, first and only read of district policies requiring review. Mr. Schuler.
Mr. Chair, we commenced the policy committee last Thursday afternoon to review some of the 400 series that were listed. We had a little wide range. Some of the 400 policies were reviewed annually, and so we had taken care of those in a previous month, so we were able to kind of eliminate some of them off our list, so we're down to roughly six, seven there, I think, in total. Again, I want to thank the policy committee for taking the time to review those policies with us. There's nothing substantial that was called out in these policies. I don't know if there's any comment from the policy committee, but we are recommending a first and only read for this month, as last month was a little heavy for our policy committee. They appreciated a lighter load, if you will, on some pretty minor changes at this point in time. minor changes at this point in time.
The gift policy is down to $5.
Yes.
Yes.
Nobody gives us gifts anyway.
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the first and reading of those 400 series policies.
I'll second.
Have a motion made by Mr. Felth, seconded by Ms. Schultz. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item E, the 2023 payable 2024 levy certification. Ms. Rader.
Good evening. I am going to discuss the 2023-24 levy information. As we all know, well, we get our levy funds from three of our, excuse me, we get levy dollars for three of our funds. The general fund, the community ed fund, and the debt service fund. I'm going to review all three of the funds and the levy amounts that we're going to be getting, comparing them to last year to what is happening this year, and try to explain some of the differences. I will start with the general fund. The first slide shows our referendum, local optional and equity levy amounts. As I've explained in the past, every year there will be adjustments to the levy, and that's because the numbers that they're using to compute the levy are all estimated, and then they go two years back, and then they clean it up. So, if you got overpaid or underpaid, that'll come true in the adjustments. So, there are some adjustments to all three of those components of the levy, but they pretty much even out. So, it's fairly consistent. Please note that a referendum does have an inflationary factor, so you will see that the amount of the referendum did increase, and that is one of the reasons why that initial amount increased. The second page talks about our, these are our restricted funds of our levy, operating capital, long-term facility maintenance, safe school. There, again, are some adjustments to the long-term facility maintenance and safe schools, but in totality, again, they sort of average out, some are higher and some are lower. The next slide shows our career tech, and then our lease levy and our reemployment. Our lease levy is basically what our Southwest Metro does on their lease. That's just a pass-through, and it did increase a little bit from last year. Our reemployment, that is the amount that we're allowed to levy for unemployment. And we can only do the ones that are not during the summer, just the school year unemployment. So, we didn't have a lot of payout last year, so that did get reduced to $5,000 from '16. Pretty much stable. If we go to the, well, actually, the total page is right there. There is a $74,000 increase from last year's levy, but it ends up being 2%. One thing that is a change, Minnesota Department Ed is always continually updating the numbers, and there was a change from the time this was published. There is an adjustment in the levy category of about $11,000, so it does decrease the lease levy amount. So, technically, our amount for Fund One is only a $62,000 increase, which is about a 2% increase. I'm going to, anybody have any questions on general fund? Okay, I'll move on to the community service fund. The first slide is our basic levy, our youth services after school, and the school age care. You'll notice that the basic levy of community ed did decrease by $10,700, and that is because state statute changed. It was 9.5%, and it reduced to 3.7%, and that's just state statute. You'll also notice that the school age care does have a negative $58,000, and that is due back in 2021, and that was COVID years. We budgeted higher than we actually had expenses for. So, there is that recoupment there. The next slide for community services is our early childhood, our home visits and our abatements. Early childhood and home visits are fairly stable, and the abatement, there was a little bit of an adjustment there. So, total in our community service, it is a decrease of $70,000, a little over $70,000. And again, the majority of that is the school age care adjustment. The last fund that we have levy revenue is debt service. This is the principal and interest payment on our debt service that we have, and 5% of overlevying that Mr. Fetter's indicated as well. So, our basic levy reduced by $2,000, and debt excess, and debt excess is that overlevy 5%. The state regulates that. There's a small change in that. And the LTFM funds is fairly stable. The total debt service increased by $1,900, very small. So, we're pretty stable. I do like to include a part of my presentation about how much of the district's revenue is based on our levy. For our general fund, it's only 16%. Community service, it's 14%. And then, debt service is 91%. The next slide just shows a history of what our levy amounts have been for the last six years. You can see if there's any big swings, there's usually a reason, but we've been pretty stable for a while. And I have 2004 on there twice. Sorry about that. I forgot to, that's the new, the 2% is the new. That 07 is the one. Sorry about that.
Oh, that was before.
Got it. Yeah, sorry. Alrighty, so then comes the time to ask the district to, not district, the school board, to approve the 2003-2004 levy. The total amount of the levy is seven, this is changed from this slide because of that adjustment in the lease. So, it's $7,797,368.26. It's a .07% increase from the previous year. And another thing, we will approve the maximum, which that allows any adjustments that the MDE has, good or bad, will take into account when we do our final levy in December. So.
So, this will come back to the board in December?
Yes, it will, at our truth and taxation. And those will be final. Nothing will change. But these numbers could change. More than likely, they won't, but they could.
Move approval.
I'll second.
I forgot to ask for questions.
Yeah.
I guess there's none.
We'll get there. Motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Ms. Danielson. Any further discussion or questions from Ms. Rader? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Moving on to item F, the Watertown Mayor Flex Learning Day Plan. Mr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this school year, we will be exercising flex learning days in our calendar if there isn't clement weather. Again, we hope we don't have as many as we did last year, but this is an option that allows us to keep the school year moving and keep learning occurring throughout the school year, not having to make up days at the end of the school year. Tonight, what you'll be doing is approving the plan. What I would just remind you, if you go down in the document, each building has their own specific plan. Those will be currently being, they're currently being worked on as we speak, as teachers have come back from their summer break. The principals and directors at this time will be kind of finalizing those and continue to improve that process as we get feedback from parents and staff and students on how to improve that. So, tonight, you're just approving the plan basically so that we can move forward with exercising those days. The devil in the details will be worked at the building levels to complete those over the next month or so. I will add, one of the legislature changes this past spring was that administration has to work with the teacher association to come up with an agreeable plan. So, Mr. Rendell and I have met and exchanged this document a few times over the last few weeks to get on the same page, and the teachers' association is in agreement with moving forward with that plan. So, again, we'd rather not use those, but they are there. Again, five is what the state is allowing us to use. That did not change through spring legislation, so we're asking for the board to approve the plan.
It's still five flex learning days and two, like, right? Is it still two, like, no?
Peds.
Got it. Is what we're allotted for the year.
True snow days.
Yeah.
So, our plan would be to continue to use the flex learning days first, and then tap into those two non-teacher days, and, excuse me, non-student days, but teacher PD days.
Got it.
Basically, the last year, essentially.
And those, remind me again, those two non-student or teacher days, we don't have to make those up at the end of the year? It's anything above and beyond that?
Right. So, those two days, the teachers used on July, I want, actually, June 5th and 6th, I think, last year. And then, yes, if we would have been beyond that, we would have brought students back to.
Correct.
And extended those.
Sure.
Teacher workshop days into 7th and 8th of June and so forth. But, yeah, thank you. Keep knocking.
So, will these plans be shared with parents once they get finalized, as they get closer to?
Exactly. Thanks for mentioning. That's the first step in the process, get board approval, and then we'll start working, like I said, internally on our, and again, the framework is there for the most part. As you click on those plans, you can kind of see, but there are some tweaks. Now that staff is back in buildings, it will have to finalize those before we officially roll them out to parents and students.
I would make one recommendation, take it or leave it. You know, adding in about those five days, because I don't think, I didn't see it anywhere on the document, sort of what, how many days there are.
Yeah.
I know we kind of had sort of a walkthrough document last year, you know, maybe something like that.
Right.
Just so we know where we're at.
Absolutely. We can do that.
Yeah, I didn't see anything that had changed from, I mean, considerably from last year. So, I'll make a motion to approve the flex learning day plan.
I'll second. Have a motion made by Ms. Danielson and seconded by Mr. Felth. Any further discussion on the flex learning day plan? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries, and this ends the action items of the meeting. Coming up next is the review and information items. Mr. Schuler and Mr. Zeimer, come on up for bond referendum project updates.
Do you have a clicker there, Mr. Zeimer?
Will work.
You good?
So, are you in the agenda? Can you go into your agenda?
Oh, I should probably go back. I apologize. I used his.
Yes. If you can go back into the website, refresh the website.
Yep. All right. You're getting out of here. Sorry.
It's okay. And then, refresh, please. So, I want you to go on. You need to go on.
All right.
There you go.
You need to, you need to hit exit. Hit escape. Or, yeah, go on to PowerPoint.
Here we go. That's the abatement one, I think, specifically. I guess.
Something on your way?
Yeah. Either way. We'll work with it. Clickers now are turning off there. All right. I'll just advance you.
Not a big deal. So, just a quick update on the abatement bond project. Obviously, you moved on a couple items to keep that process moving forward. Just wanted to give a brief update on, again, scope that's included in that. If you click it there, click it again. So, again, we're current, did the steps here to get the financing moving forward. Current steps right now, we have survey work scheduled, and soil borings will follow within the next month here, and design is currently underway as well. So, working on the specifics. Again, not a lot of design involved with this one, other than the area between the middle school and high school. That's really the only area that we're truly actually changing. Something in terms of the parking lots. You want to click it again there. So, CLC, we're going to rebuild that parking lot that's in the front of the main office there, along with the north side around the west. And then, the portion that we had bid out last time that we chose not to accept bids on, we're going to bid that out again, which will provide some parking on the south side of the building and rework those sidewalks. So, it's a little more orderly around there in terms of circulation. We'll be adding curbing and some better entrance signification at the north parking lot there, and some of that old fencing that really doesn't serve a purpose anymore will be removed as well. Elementary, again, parking lots structurally are pretty good here. What we're seeing here predominantly, probably in terms of correction, is sidewalks that are heaving throughout. As you noticed around the district, when possible, sidewalks have been ground so that the edges meet. It's a sign that we've got some heaving going on underneath those. So, we'll be working to provide a better sand section under the areas that we replace. And then, for the most part, there's some spot replacements in the exit that was added to the main parking lot that exits back out onto the road there on the northwest corner. And then, at the bus loop, there's some failing pavement there as well. So, beyond that, then it'll be a seal coat and chip coat. Next slide. Next slide. So, here's the area between the middle school and high school that we'll be reconfiguring, just to provide a better route for students to get over to the stadium from the building and the fields, and then as well as just providing a little more order to that area in terms of not only district office personnel and custodial personnel, but deliveries to the building. Again, this is a draft. We'll be reviewing this further with staff as we get into more of the details, and then along with this, some of the utilities beneath this area will be repaired as well. The east and west parking lots at the high school on the south side of the building, predominantly in chipped and cracked seal areas there, but we do have some spot pavement replacement areas. The retaining wall over in the west parking lot is going to be attended to, and we've got a catch base in there that needs some repair. And then, improving some of the landscaping and waiting area for buses up in that area as well. Overall budget hasn't changed, as you saw from Mr. Fetter's presentation earlier, and we're following the schedule that Baker Tilly provided. Again, the steps that we took care of earlier today were noted in there. And then, overall schedule, hit the next button. We're just, we're still on track for what we were talking about. So, looking to get bids out, drawings out for bidding in December with an award in early January. Any questions? And then, beyond that, the only other things, we're still working on closeout of the bond, 2019 bond projects. So, we've had contractors out replacing trees here before weather allows us not to do that anymore. You'll probably see some overseeding occurring around the stadium where grass didn't come in, and then just some irrigation repairs that are, should be finalizing up. Beyond that, all the site contractors should be wrapped up here shortly for the year. And then, the only project really that's taking a lot of focus right now is the greenhouse. So, if you've been back there by chance, footings have been pulled.
And how long is the install?
I think just a couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks from the frame, and then it's
It's basically
Then it's the inside stuff.
Yeah. It's basically a kit at this point, because they preassemble it offsite and just bring it on pieces. But, yes, there is mechanical, electrical work that'll need to be hooked up after the fact, so.
So, are we thinking first classes next semester, then? Is that kind of the plan?
Yeah. The goal would be have it ready for class by Christmas, first day, essentially.
Okay. Perfect. Anything else for Mr. Zeimer?
Thanks for talking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Superintendent Schuler, update on strategic directions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just as a reminder, each month, I'll be giving an update on our teaching plan. And again, this, this month, I'd like to just to focus on learner outcomes. I feel like this is the time of year where we're starting to do our, wrapping up our fall testing. For example, in K through eight, we finished our, our fast testing the last couple of weeks, and that's really off to a great start. I'll show you here in just a second, some really good, interesting data from the elementary that Ms. O'Connell provided today for an update. Also, at the middle school, right now, that testing is done too. So, we're getting some benchmark data on the fall testing for our five through eighth grade students. It's been really neat to see, too, I think what's really changing this year is that already, they've already had meetings with Mr. Gertner and Mr. Viao together, teachers have, and departments, math and reading, to look at the data to start developing a plan. Here we are in, what, week four of the three-year school year, and we're already starting to develop those plans of what's our next step here for those students who are struggling, and for those students who are above grade level as well. So, it's really cool to see that happening already. And then, in the high school, in terms of that tier one instruction we've talked a lot about, Mr. Henon, Ms. Fiskus, and Ms. Pepperdittis and I met last week with MDE. They're working on a program called the Atlas Program. And what Atlas is, is basically another way to support tier one instruction. There are 20 other schools that were part of that conversation, virtual conversation, for about half a day last week. So, we were able to really start looking at our vision for, for high school in terms of what does that look like for kids who are struggling, and what are those evidence-based practices that are, that are needed to move the dial at the high school level? So, fun to see, and we'll, I think we have about five of those virtual meetings throughout the school year to get guidance on, on next steps. The data I wanted to show real quick was, was, is rather interesting as well. I'm going to skip down a little bit to our tier two instruction. So, these are two, tier two eligible students. So, basically, those are those first realm of kids who are not meeting the benchmark. In the blue was last year's students, last year's fall data. So, for example, in first grade last year, we had 51 students that needed tier one assistance or help interventions, if you will. This year, we knocked that down to 25 students that needed intervention. As you can see, not as quite a big a gain in second grade, but boy, in third grade, 24 students last fall needed help going into the school year after that fall benchmark. Now, eight are using that, needing that support. Same with fourth grade, 32 students last year, 14 this year are using those supports. We're really starting to see that gap starting to, you know, really come down in terms of kids coming back in the fall and needing those supports. So, that's been really encouraging.
Does that track the student?
Yeah.
Last year's first graders are this year's second graders, is how you have that chart.
Yep. But this, this is the next slide. Thanks for bringing it up, Jim. This is the cohort, and Ms. O'Connell, correct me if I get off the rail here a little bit, but this is the data that follows that same cohort. So, the same group now, fifth, first graders, last fall, they needed 14, they had 14 students. This year, they have 25. So, that went up, actually, you can see. That went from 14 to 25. So, that's an area that we're obviously targeting on. What's the why? They left kindergarten and went into first grade, needing more support. In, in second grade, again, same cohort, this year, second graders, 26 of them last year needed support, 18 this year. Same with third grade, 20 needed support at the beginning of last year, now it's down to 14, and you can see fourth grade as well. So, we're starting to see, I think, a positive shift for kids and transferring those kids from grade to grade, that, that number is shrinking, which hopefully tells us that those interventions are making a difference, and we're catching them early enough and getting them back on track. Again, this is just fall data, so it's interesting, too, to see where that'll be in winter, and obviously, when they come to the end of the year in spring. But, these are just some ideas, I know, at the elementary and other buildings, how we're tracking some of that effectiveness that we've talked about and how we're doing. Any other questions? So, those are the three big pieces. Again, each month, in my meeting, my communication to parents, I'm going to focus in on one of the commitments that we've made. And so, parents will see that. And then, at the following board meeting for that month, I'll report back in that specific area as well. I think next month, October is learning outcomes again, so you might get another dose of, of that piece. But I think that's how we'll report back to the board on, on each of those areas and how we're doing, so.
And then, have a state of the state at the end of the year.
State of the state at the end of the year, absolutely.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to the admin reports, going to start off tonight with Mr. Henon.
Apologize for being late. We were doing our admin assistant interviews tonight, and we did have four candidates, and we feel like we're going to have a, hopefully, a good shot of getting, there was several that really stuck out. So, we're hoping to get that wrapped up by the end of the week. Overall, it's been a really good start to the year. You know, it's, it's kind of crazy, we're in our fourth week, and I always, you know, tell the kids, I told one today, I'm like, you do realize you're 30% down in the first quarter already? So, it, it goes so quickly when you're in a quarterly system like that. But, overall, been really good. We had homecoming last week, just a really good week, started with coronation and ending with the dance on Saturday. We seem to have a really high student involvement. Coronation was really well attended, I thought, way more than in the years past. We had powder puff and volleyball on, on Wednesday night, and, and again, a lot of kids were there. Seemed to have a lot of fun. We actually had to make them leave. They wanted to stay forever. We're like, no, it's time to go now. So, and then, the football game on Friday night with the NHS Carnival tailgate. Again, a lot of people there. I think the NHS raised over $1,200 for the, the cancer fundraiser. And so, again, it was just a really good week, and the kids were, were great all week, and it was just, I know it was earlier than normal, but again, it was just nice to see so many people at the events. Just one thing, I guess, I really wanted to talk a little bit more about is, we are going to spend some time, there's a working group in the high school from the leadership team, we're going to spend some time on our graduation requirements. The state obviously has certain things that we have to meet to graduate, but even within that, there's some flexible routes to get there. Then, we have our own set of Watertown May requirements. It's been a few years since we've really taken a dive kind of into looking at, do those requirements match? You know, now that we have a new profile of our graduate, we have a new strategic directions. We felt like they should match that. And so, it's, we're going to take a look at it this year. It was prompted a little bit, the state is now requiring next year's freshmen to take government 11th to 12th grade year. So, that's a change, because now they do it their ninth grade year, and we don't, and we lose some of that autonomy. But, again, so just, you'll be hearing more about that in the next few months, because it will require a change in one of our policies. But, we're looking at with next year's freshman, this will start. And just to give you an example, like, we're going to look at, like, grouping some of the things. So, for example, like, one idea that's come up is, all kids will have to take, like, two of the following credits, and that could be a mentorship, work experience, career and life planning, speaking in the workplace, or writing in the workplace. That would guarantee every single kid at Watertown May will leave here with a current and updated resume and has done a mock interview, for example. Because that matches our strategic directions of being ready for, you know, post-secondary things. So, it, it's going to look a little different, but we're kind of, I don't want to say we're blowing it up, but we do have state requirements. But even then, how we meet them is just going to look different, just because it's, it's just a different routes they can take than, you know, 10, 15 years ago. So, that's just something we'll continue to bring back and keep you updated. But, and, and again, it's, it's really been a good start with both teachers and all staff and with kids, so. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gertner?
Good evening, everybody. I'm coming in a little bit late, too. We have conferences at the middle school tonight. First things first, I want to thank our PTO for dinner. I love tacos, so, yes, I had too many tonight, but we really appreciate that. It means a lot, and just a nice way to get us rolling into conferences tonight. So, thank you, PTO. Start of the school year, we're off to a really smooth start, just like Mr. Schuler had mentioned. We've just kind of dove in to address some ambitious goals that we know we need to deal with. So, timing is of the essence. Wanted to talk just a little bit about how that's going at the middle school. So, working a lot with Joe and our language arts and math department, and I think just very laser-focused, looking specifically at the number of students right now that are not demonstrating proficiency in math and in reading. So, we're really kind of back to the basics with teams. We've started meeting with them and just deliberately saying, we need to take a look at specifically what needs to be secured by grade level, and just make sure they know what those things are. And then, we're using some different online tools to help them write assessments that are out of rigor, that we're satisfied with in terms of saying that if the kids are meeting these standards at this rigor, then in theory, they should be doing well on the assessments that we have to use to verify that. So, it's going really well. We're pulling teachers out of classes, though, you know, for half-days to do that work, but we just can't continue to move forward with status quo. So, that's just where, really where our heads are right now. The other goal that we started working on a couple of years ago was just to make sure that most of our kids are getting their needs met environmentally in our building. So, the goal has been 85% there as well. And right now, at least 85% of our kids are presenting themselves as being able to self-regulate and manage and, you know, participate in their learning. We're still in the honeymoon phase, so as we get into the school year and kids kind of adjust and they start to balance all those things that are required of them as young people, we'll be testing the waters a little bit on that. So, Jenna Olson, our behavior interventionist, is full-time in her position this year. And so, she is taking the reins on that as a leader. Really proud of her, and that is giving me the flexibility to focus more on the instructional side. So, I appreciate the support for building out that intervention role for us. The third thing we're starting to work on, and this is tied to our DEI plus B work that we're doing in our district, our leadership team will be working with our staff to look at school-wide, like, an equitable work, work, homework policy. Our parents have been asking for us to, to take a close look at homework and work-life balance and those kinds of things. So, the DEI plus B committee that met last spring, and actually, over the summer, said, let's take a look at homework and equity and take a look at best practices. So, we're going to be looking at some of that work. I'll be sharing that with the board periodically. And ultimately, what I want to see is kids coming in and having purposeful work experiences at school and getting the majority of their work done there, so that outside of school, they have family time, they have time for activities, if they have part-time jobs, those kinds of things. But, let's get it done during the day, and everybody participating, participating in learning. And if we ask them to do something outside of school, what is that going to look like? And, you know, how does that tie in with equity? So, more to come on that, but we're starting to research that topic. And I think this is district-wide, if I'm not wrong, we're looking at that in all our buildings? So, those are the kinds of things we're working on in the middle school. Good stuff, but a lot going on. Couple of other things, again, start the year, it's been smooth for us, really a nice rollout for the school year. New special ed director, I want to thank Randy for her help. She's been in the trenches with us, helping us to redevelop some of our programming there. We're excited about our STEM program, that's off and, and running. We have no phone zones in the building, and right now, kids and staff seem to be really working well with that. It's been very consistent and well-received. Parents have been very supportive. New support programs, our behavior model, we're in year three, so off to a good start. Couple of miscellaneous things, like I said, fall conferences tonight already, and then we have a second night next Thursday. And the last thing is homecoming. It just came out of nowhere. We had a great week in the middle school. Our student council puts this agenda together. I'm not sure if you heard from kids about our pep fest. It was great. Mr. Schuler was there. I don't know if he still has any hearing left. But, just a fantastic week, great game. So, just a very quick, came out of nowhere, but just a great homecoming week at the middle school. So, any questions?
You forgot to add the part about the tug of war in the pep fest.
We had a tug of war.
It's an annual tug of war.
I don't know if we have video of that.
I wasn't there.
Mrs. Yuen, you weren't there for that part of it?
I was at the high school.
And what ends up happening is eventually, it's men against the women.
Teachers, that is.
Teachers. And I think we lost six consecutive years. We, we called in Mr. Schuler and Mr. Vio, he was, Mr. Vio had an excuse, he was out of town. But, Mr. Schuler showed up, and we still didn't quite have, have the strength
It wasn't much help. I was on some blisters.
Overtake.
That's all I got.
Even with Bill McDonald as an anchor, so.
Wow.
We just didn't have it, so. Nonetheless, it was a good time. Kids really enjoyed it, so. All right, any questions? Thanks, everybody.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. O'Connell?
Just a couple of updates. Since I was last here, we have some staffing updates. So, we were able to fill three of our open para-professional positions for special ed, so we're all full now. Paige Jacob, Megan Handley, and Ann Nelson will be joining us to help support the needs of students. We also added a fifth section of kindergarten. And so, we did hire a teacher, Heather Prodal, but in the interim between when I interviewed her and we added that fifth section, she had taken a long-term sub-job in a neighboring district. So, she'll be joining us in November. So, Angie Johnson, who had just slid into an intervention role, slid into that kindergarten spot to fill in there until the end of November. So, thanks to both of them for joining our team, and Angie for being so flexible and moving positions unexpectedly. The kind of coolest thing that came out of that is when I sent out the message to staff that Angie was moving from intervention into there organically, like, a group of 12 teachers showed up. I think Superintendent Schuler tweeted it out, as did I, and just started helping put that room together. One made name tags, one laminated them, several made bulletin boards, arranged furniture, just, it was all hands-on-deck, and it was awesome just to see everybody helping out. We are still looking for an ADsys para-professional. That's a para-professional who works with our gen ed kids, supporting them with their social-emotional needs during the day, as well as two math core tutors. We are working on strengthening our core instruction this year. Teachers have started their first collective efficacy cycle of the year, which is that six-to-eight-week short-term cycle that they do on a SMART goal around setting and approving goals. Goals, the cycle range from improving the implementation of some of their new core resources, a phonics resource called UFly, and a vocabulary resource called Vocabulary Surge, what focuses on the meaning of words and the morphology, along to, like, increasing student fluency with reading and being intentional about flexible groupings for students. We also began our implementation of Playworks, which we had received a ship grant for. We had a half-day training over workshop week, and now at recess, we've started having kids line up at the beginning of recess every day, go through a recess chant that helps them remember the expectations for being a caring, safe problem solver on the playground, talk about which zones are open. And we have just started having applications come in for junior coaches. So, we're going to have fourth graders who are going to help out for 20 minutes a week to 25 minutes a week, depending on which grade levels recess they go, helping to lead and play games. We have 60 kids who have applied so far.
Wow.
Which is incredible. So, we, we'll be working our way through that, because we want to balance it with those who are selected for student council, so that they're not missing too much time in a week, and then potentially spread that out over the year. We did meet with our counterparts from Playworks today to set up our three times that they'll come out to the building. We have 60 kids who have applied so far.
Wow.
Which is incredible. So, we will be working our way through that, because we want to balance it with those who are selected for student council, so that they're not missing too much time in a week, and then potentially spread that out over the year. We did meet with our counterparts from Playworks today to set up our three times that they'll come out to the building. They were so impressed that we already have junior coaches up and rolling, we're in the process of it, where some of the buildings that they partner with weekly don't have that yet, so, they asked if we would be okay possibly having a PR piece done on us that would run nationally with Playworks about the power of play at a school where we're not direct partners with them but using them. So, of course, I told them we'd be interested in, so, we'll see if that will be something that comes to pass. And then, like Superintendent Schuler showed, we finished our FastBridge screening assessments, we're seeing great growth, but we still have quite a few kids who are qualifying for tier two and tier three intervention. So, with Angie having slid into kindergarten, we're down an intervention teacher right now, but between our two intervention teachers and our two reading corps teachers, we are serving over 90 kids in 48 intervention groups during the school day. There was 96 eligible for tier three and 90 for tier two, so, we're working our way through those kids that we saw the greatest need from, knowing that some of those kids that came out in that tier-two range, just by nature of being in their classroom and embedded in instruction, might just kind of naturally get some skills met from that core instruction and from meeting with the teacher in small group, then when Angie comes back at the end of November, we can scoop up more of those kids, too. Questions?
Thank you. Mr. Vio.
Thank you for the opportunity to be giving you some information tonight about what's going on in the world of teaching and learning. First, we'll start off with our professional development, I mentioned last time that we were doing tier-one, and we did a one-hour session with each of the buildings as we kicked off the year, and then we also had 12, excuse me, 11 breakout sessions for about 25 minutes each. The feedback on that was phenomenal, we sent out a survey, and staff really, really enjoyed it to the point where, when we got together with our PD committee, they were wondering if we could do something similar to that again in our January PD time, so, that feedback was really great. I also had one veteran teacher come up to me and say, you know, Joe, thanks for that kind of kickoff this year, I just wanted to let you know, I was really rejuvenated, ready to go, I've got my learning targets up in my room and we're going to town, and it just felt really good about the start of the year, so, that was very, very reassuring. As Nick mentioned, we've been working at the middle school with math and reading, he talked about laser-like focus, I've been mentioning insanely clear, and that's kind of been our real focus this year for that, the math and the language arts group. We are utilizing a new tool, new to Watertown Mayor, that is a test item bank of about 180,000 test questions, and they're all aligned to the Minnesota standards. So, as we're getting our focus in on the standards, they're able to go in and use that tool and pull out assessment questions, they don't have to develop them on their own, supposedly at the appropriate rigor. Now, as we go through and we're developing this, we've kind of had a test pilot group of a couple of teachers going through, and they say, we still do need to do some quality control on that, but at least we've got a great starting point for them. And as Nick mentioned, we're going to be doing pre-test, post-testing, and really, really being laser-like focused or insanely clear about what it is that we as teachers want our kids to learn, as well as getting that information to the kids and what they need to be participating in. Also, the administrative team, we're going to do some professional development on our own as well this year. We are going to be on the first Tuesday of every month, we're going to rotate around in clusters of three or four of us, and go visit and do many observations for about 15 minutes, gather up some information, and then for our own professional growth, come back and talk about what we saw, how would we go about approaching and, you know, what kind of coaching can we do for our staff members and keep, you know, that continuous improvement model going? And so, we as ourselves are really trying to focus in on that tier-one and give our staff good feedback as well when we're going in for observations. So, that'll be coming up on the first Tuesday of every month. As has been mentioned for our assessments, FastBridge is basically done for reading and math. Overall, the reading score had an average K through eight, that is one point higher than where we were last fall, and six of the nine classes, six of the nine grades had a higher-than-average score than last year. And math is about a half a point higher than where we were last year, with four out of nine classes being higher average than when we were last year. So, we're off to a great start that way. Curriculum, Bob and I met with the high school social studies team, the high school social studies standards are new and needing to be adopted here by '25, '26, excuse me, '27, so, we've got a little bit of time in there. Bob was talking about some of the offerings that, you know, may need to be switching some things around, but our goal there was to identify the standards, figure out what the differences were from the old standards to the new standards, prioritize them, sort them out by unit, and then take a look at how are we collecting evidence that the kids are actually, you know, meeting these standards? Because when I took a look at the standards, a lot of them are based on the higher-order thinking skills, I don't know if you're, we call them HOTS, higher-order thinking skills, but in social studies, they have like 173 different benchmarks for their high school standards, which roughly is about two benchmarks a quarter, or, excuse me, two benchmarks a week in each of those classes. But along with that, there's about 100 of them, of the benchmarks that say analyze, explain, evaluate, or examine. So, how you collect evidence around that is going to be one of the next challenges for all of us. But other than that, that's where we are in the land of teaching and learning. Any questions?
Thank you. Ms. Demler.
All right, good evening. I'm going to start with our early childhood programming. We kicked our year off last week, and just prior to that, we had our 50th ECFE birthday party, vehicle fair, and open house, which was a great success on September 14. We right now have about 50 families who are participating in our ECFE program and in our Young Royals preschool. We're still holding out about 99 students currently enrolled, with 67 of those potentially going into kindergarten next year. Our early childhood teachers are actively involved in the letters training right now, working on their core advantage assessment as well, and participating in reflective practice teams meeting monthly to really focus on goals for this upcoming year. For childcare, we are at 142 students, with 23 in our infant and toddler, and we have 20 students, 21 actually infant waitlisted, and 19 on our toddler, so, we're really working on finding staff, so we can accept some of those kids off our waitlist. In our preschool age, three and then four and five, we have about 38 enrolled, and 32 of those are attending Young Royals. In school age, we have 81, and we are kind of working on those waitlists as well, and we, again, really searching for qualified staff in our childcare. And then, just a couple of community ed general updates, our winter-spring catalog is in full progress. My deadline for content is next week, October 2nd, and we hope to have that out in homes by the week of November 20th, so, trying to shake it up again, find some new content to add. And we met as an advisory group last week, September 19th, and one of the topics we really focused on was partnerships, and defining what partnerships is that are included in our catalog. So, we are actively working on that. That is community ed right now, any questions?
Ms. Demler?
At the, at the committee meeting, you mentioned something about we won an award for our newsletter? I think you need to explain that.
Our catalog won an honorable mention for its layout and content, and that will be presented on our catalog for the winter-spring.
Is it just local or?
No, it's a national.
A national one?
Wow.
All right, Mr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, hard to top that award, but I think all our admin team has mentioned, it was a great homecoming week. Again, it takes a lot from our staff, and I know especially our high school staff, to supervise events, to be on-site many of those nights, leading all the way up to the homecoming dance on Saturday night, but, again, just thanks to everybody. I know Mr. Henin's probably getting his sleep this week now, catching up a little bit, because pretty active week, but just a great week for students and alumni. Also, just a note, right here at the city hall, will be educators appreciation dinner, that's coming up on Wednesday night from 5:00 to 7:00. Again, our chamber here in Watertown is just so generous, and there's a list of restaurants that are providing food, I'll name them, Riverside, Bees on the River, R&amp;B Cafe, Loose Line Lodge, Cookie Store, Marketplace Foods, and Papa D's Italian Ice will all be here and serving food for all of our staff. And again, just want to thank them and all the local businesses who participate in that. The Chamber really makes that a big deal, and they get a lot of excitement out of it, too, to welcome teachers. You remember last spring, we did it, this year, they want to try it in the fall to see if there's a little better turnout, so, we're really encouraging staff to attend, and certainly board members, you're welcome to attend as well. Also, just want to highlight on October 7th, it is the gala night, or the casino night, excuse me, for our Ed Foundation, and that's also right here. They'll have about 14 different casino games, silent auction items, live auction items, and then, of course, the grand prize is the Ranger, Clarus Ranger, they'll be raffling off. If you want tickets, I still have some, if you want to see me, I'd be glad to hand those over to you, but, and then lastly, just had another note on the 18th, we're inviting the Watertown Chamber to have their annual monthly meeting at the high school. It's, October is manufacturing month, so, we're really going to try to highlight the work that we're doing in our CTE lab, our work experience area, our fax area, and also our ag area with our Chamber. So, we're going to invite them up for their meeting, we're going to feed them lunch, our food service does catering on the side, so, we're going to offer some lunch, and then give them about a 15-minute tour of each of those four areas that I highlighted. So, Mr. Henin, myself, Mr. Vio, and Heather are all going to take each group, and we're going to rotate them through, and just, again, highlight some of the great work that we're doing on that CTE side of things, and that manufacturing side, if you will, just to create some interest here at the local level with our Chamber, and they certainly support our schools, and we want to reciprocate that by showing them, and just, again, answering questions and how we can support them in the workforce here in Watertown, and certainly Mayor and across the area. So, we're excited for that. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Schuler? All right, moving on to board member reports. Any board member reports since the last board meeting?
Southwest met on Tuesday, and just like Ms. Peyton mentioned, it's always hard to find, well, any teachers to fill the shortages, and they really do have quite a long list, unlike other districts, and so, it's challenging, and they actually came up with an interesting solution. I'll say interesting, because I don't think a lot of people have done that. You have heard from Superintendent and Fredley that started that, but they're looking at hiring international students now, and so, he actually got a pool of candidates and for, you know, specific positions, they're coming from the Philippines right now, and it could be different areas, very qualified people, and hopefully, you know, they can get some visas, it would be for three years, but after a year, they kind of revisit and go, okay, should we extend this contract or not? Now, if it doesn't work out earlier, of course, you know, they won't stay the whole year. They are aware that it's cold here, I think that was the biggest question, and then also that they would be taken care of their meals and, you know, obviously lodging and all of that, but I thought that was a really good way of dealing with a shortage, so, hopefully, he's hoping we can have some teachers, I didn't know exactly how many, but by pretty much NEA, so, we'll see how that goes. And then, also, East Union, they're hoping to open the doors as well around that timeframe, so, some good news, I thought.
We had a finance committee the other week to kind of go over the levy information in detail, I don't want to say excruciating detail, but in more detail than we got at the board here. Facilities meeting, or facilities committee's still meeting every two weeks, kind of making sure that all the checkbox items are done, working on the greenhouse, and as well as kind of discussing some of the abatement projects. Also, had a community education meeting, and as Ms. Demler said, you know, kind of the focus on what is a partnership, and sort of how we can kind of promote new and different opportunities for our learners in the district.
Maybe to add on to the facilities committee piece, because it'll probably be an agenda in the next month, is the upgrade of some pool equipment, filters and whatnot, this is one of the things that's coming up. The funds of the abatement bond will help us free up some funds from the referendum to be able to update filter equipment on the pool, so.
And that was also discussed in the community education, because it affects them, from swimming lessons.
Yeah, I saw that in the latest newsletter.
So, that'll be going on for bid here in October.
I believe so.
And with the intent of approving that contract at the October board meeting, with the work to start after fall swimming season. And then, personnel committee, as you saw on the consent agendas earlier today, that we had successful negotiations with food service and custodians, so, thank you to both of those groups for their help in getting that across the finish line, and we have para-professionals and teacher negotiations, as you see on the agenda coming up in October, so, that committee will be busy again.
Sounds like it.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
Yes, thank you.
Policy committee recently met for our 400 series, and we will continue to have meetings to go over policies as needed. Teaching and learning, our first meeting will be in November, November 7th, and marketing and communication, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we had to reschedule that one because there was just too much going on.
Yeah.
Our hope is October.
Early October, yeah.
Anything else? All right, and with that, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
He's waiting for me, aren't you? I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ms. Danielson, second by Ms. Nathan, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned at 7:25 PM.